This call to order in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of this meeting was provided to the home news Tribune, the Star Letter, the Highland Park Planet on January 8, 2025, and was posted on Borough Hall website at www.hbbar.com and on the bulletin board at Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, and has remained continuously posted as required by law far exited to the right and left of council chambers. No formal action will be taken tonight. Jennifer, can you lead us in the pleasure of allegiance?
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well thought.
Mayor Proctor.
Yes.
Councilmember George.
You.
Councilmember Hale.
Here.
Councilmember Hur.
Here.
Council President Kent Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Piston.
Here.
Councilmember Vargas.
Here.
Borough Attorney Renault.
Here.
Borough Administrator Holier.
Here.
Okay, discussion item 1010 Raritan Avenue redevelopment form a Loubet Hall.
Off to the races.
Off to the races. We're gonna get right into it.
It is a redevelopment oriented evening, as you can see by your agendas, and we're gonna start with these two. And I'm gonna kind of, if you don't mind, Mayor, I might just flow from one to the other.
Yes, so let me say 1102 Raritan Avenue redevelopment form a CBA office. It's right in.
They're in the same neighborhood and they're, you know, following the same plan. But just to kind of reorient, it's been a while since some of us thought about this area. But we adopted the Upper Raritan redevelopment plan last year, I believe, or 2024. Don't hold me to the date. And we use the rehab area designation, not the redevelopment area designation. So we're really looking at kind of just a redevelopment plan and a project that needs to conform to redevelopment plan. We're not engaging in financial discussions with these redevelopers. But they both have made significant progress on their projects. 1010 Raritan Ave., and actually, I'm gonna flip to some slides to show up on the screen in a second, but 1010 Raritan's ahead of 1102, meaning we've been looking and working with them on their concept plans for much longer, just to give you a sense. But they're starting to converge, and I figure it's probably better to talk to them together, about them together, since they are so close to each other. And they are from the same redevelopment plan. So hold on, I'm gonna navigate, I have to switch to glasses on, so I can see my screen. And hold on, let me just cut that out of there.
Oh, no, that's not.
So just as much for anybody who might be at home, as for you guys, you know, this plan that these projects are in covers these two, these little pink blocks on Raritan Avenue, that upper portion of Raritan Avenue. And I'll remind all, this is also the portion of Raritan Avenue where hopefully our road diet is coming soon, which I think is an important consideration, thinking that we might be intensifying development in this area slowing down the road is gonna be even more important than it is right now. But, you know, this whole stretch is what we kind of have become to refer to as Upper Raritan. The projects, sorry, I'm trying to navigate the, um, my little thing, okay. Sorry for the blur, but this is just excerpts from the redevelopment plan. The blocks we're looking at that are covered by the plan are these two. The 1010 Raritan are lots 16 and 17, this lower portion on the corner of South 10th. And then 1102 is this portion up here. All of these lots together constitute that project, all right? Just to kind of get you oriented to where we're talking about. And so 1102 is right in between South 11th and Maryland. So it's the full block, because it's a skinny block. These projects, we've heard nothing from those property owners and, you know, we may, in the future, if these projects work out. So, sorry, I had to deal with a hydro project exhibits from the, from the property owners. But in essence, I'm gonna go back. For 1010 Raritan, starting with that, that's where the former Loubet Hall is. There's also, the building is still there, it's just no longer a Loubet Hall. And there's also, excuse me, one second. This is making me crazy, because I can't find my hand. Thank God you can't see when I do that. Can you see my? Yeah, you can, okay. There is a, so the proposal is for a three-story, and I should mention that from our review of the plans presented, this is a compliant plan with the redevelopment plan. So just so you know, it meets kind of the general outlines of the plan. But it's a three-story building. They're proposing a mixed-use building. I'll show you some of the additional layers. The parking in the rear, all curb cuts, and this is really important, from Raritan onto this property will be closed as a result of this property. So all access is from South 10th. So that's obviously, it's kind of our mantra, closing curb cuts. Well, this is the, you know, the great-grandmother of all curb cuts, this large apron that's in this property. So that'll be a major, you know, pedestrian benefit, just from the get. Parking in the back, and then I'm just gonna toggle through some of the other exhibits that they provided. Let me make it a slightly. So this is the first-floor architectural plan. I'm gonna make it a little bigger, maybe. But essentially, what they're proposing is on the corner of 10th, I believe, a commercial space on the ground level, the laundry kind of, and the main entrance to the building. And then they have a proposal for offices that line the front of the building off of Raritan and in the back, kind of smaller efficiency apartments off the parking area. I'll show you some in a second. The, but essentially, a mixed-use approach to the site. The plan doesn't require that, but that's what they came in with. Let's see.
It's currently residential tenant.
Well, there's, there's actually two buildings. It's a non-conforming kind of situation. There is a multifamily, I don't wanna say how many units, because I don't remember off the top of my head, in the back of the property, that would also, where the parking lot is now and the kind of the closest to the residential area off of 10th. And that's not being saved. That would be demolished as part of this proposal.
And they will relocate it?
I don't know what this, I could find out, but they have lease agreements. I don't know if they have not been renewing those leases. I don't, you know, they've been talking about this project for a while. As we're not doing a redevelopment, you know, financial agreement, like, I don't know what relocation obligations are outside of just, I have a feeling they're on month-to-months now, and with the understanding that when the project gets approved and they have a timeline, that those would end. I don't know if they can have priority back into the building, or, you know, once it's built. I'm not sure, but I can certainly find out about that.
They've owned that other house for quite some time.
Oh, yeah, that, this has been, they're, they're, you can't, I don't think you can buy one and not the other. This is one lot. It's just non-conforming that they have only the two uses. So that's, but that's, you are correct. I don't, it could be vacant right now. I honestly don't know the current status. The, glasses back on. Second floor is all residential, various, I don't know the two-bedroom, the three-bedroom, the one-bedroom stats off the top of my head, it may be over here. But it's 15% affordable per our requirements. They meet that, you know, that's in their, their plan. Here's the breakdown, as it currently stands. See, that Ask AI is making me a little bit hyped for the session. Thank you, AI.
Terry, well, just one more on this. The bottom is Raritan?
Oh, no. It depends on which view you're looking.
Well, right now.
Right now, let's see, yes.
Okay.
Appears to me. It flip-flops depending on the exhibit. So I know that is confusing. But the second, this is the second floor, and the third floor has a pretty much the same layout. And we're talking about, I should have mentioned this, it's three stories, 15 units, with that commercial space on the corner and those offices lining Raritan. There's really nothing in the plan that would prohibit them from converting those offices to residential if they decide to down the line. The plan is flexible. If you recall, when we were doing the plan, this area is not heavily retail now, and we were concerned about having a strong retail component requirement in the plan, not knowing what the appetite for retail would be, and we didn't want a lot of vacancies. We also were trying to focus more of that retail intensity in the downtown area. So just to kind of refresh. So, yeah, we're looking at 15 units. The number of parking spaces they provided is 1.5 per unit. And then that also, they also have met the requirements for the commercial spaces in the building.
15 one-bedrooms?
15 multi, it's all, it's a mixture of ones, twos, and threes. Looks like eight one-bedrooms, two-twos, and two-threes. Three offices and three efficiencies, they're calling. I guess they're studios.
Do we know which ones will be affordable?
It has to be mixed in.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I mean, is it gonna be the family units?
I believe at least one of them will be a family.
Okay.
That's our intention, so. This exhibit doesn't tell me, I don't wanna swear to it, but I'm pretty sure they wouldn't have put a three if we didn't make them. And the reason we want the three is for the family. Let's see. Oh, let me zoom out a little. This is a rendering, and Matt, to your point, this is the view from the parking lot? Because this one threw me off the first time I looked at it. So this is what you, this is kind of the current rendering of the building from the parking area. I, I believe down here is the Raritan Avenue view. You can see it has signage and stuff. And this is that corner with the the commercial on the corner that they're proposing, and the offices here. I think this is gonna have the second, the first floor, one, they have, it's in the plan that they have to buffer those units from the ones that are on the ground level. So I have a suspicion that these will not look like this in the final design, though they're, they're apartments. So it's gonna look a little different. Let's see. So, and then this is the proposed east elevation, and I apologize for the life of me. I'm not sure which way that is. But essentially, they worked with us very well through, they actually were, you know, one of the reasons, the impetus for the plan was knowing that they were out there looking, and so we collaborated a lot on the design. And we're, meaning myself and Chris and Joe's team and the redevelopment office are feeling like they're pretty close. They meet the terms of the plan, and I, we just wanted to make sure the council had the chance to see the, kind of where it landed in terms of process for this project and the other ones. So I'll talk to them side by side. You know, as this is a redevelopment plan, they would need a redevelopment agreement with the borough. It would be one of our more straightforward agreements, because it's basically ensuring the affordable housing and any of the other provisions from the plan that we wanna reemphasize before they can go to the planning board for any reviews. So, kind of coming out of this, if there's some general comfort, we'll be discussing with them the potential of, you know, naming them as conditional developers, and then getting into the agreement phase of this for your approval. But the agreement's gonna be pretty basic, because it's, it's pretty much a conforming project, and we're not doing any financial highlights or anything like that, where we might be negotiating more things into the, you know, there's a limit to what we can ask for in this project because of the financial piece of that.
So. Let me just, let me just go through questions on this one.
Sure. So, so you said for, oh, sorry, can we ask questions?
Yes, please. Go ahead.
We've been asking.
Council President.
So you said that they can basically change the commercial space into residential if they want to with that?
They would have to put it in their plan.
Okay. But later down the.
And then, and then they would have to go and get, if they're gonna flip it. They would probably have to go back for site plan review with the planning board if you're changing use. So it's not like, it might be an as-of-right, but there is a review to make sure it meets all the requirements. I don't anticipate, the question is, we don't want three offices laying fallow.
Right.
If there, if there's no care there for them. They could also put retail in there. They could also, there's, there's a variety of potential uses that they could put in there. But the, we were intentionally less stringent about active first-floor retail uses in the Upper Raritan plan than we have historically been in the, in the downtown plan.
Follow-up, very simple questions. Any zoning requirements that we have to change to put the residential on that commercial?
No, that's in the plan.
Okay.
So the plan just says basically residential ground floor to top floor, but also allows for a host of commercial office retail options. In a way, I'm kind of curious to see how this pans out, because it'll give us a sense of the market in this part of town. It might give us some guidance as to what works, what doesn't. And, and that'll also evolve as other projects come online, I think. So hopefully, you know, we, we've got a template for a redevelopment agreement that we're gonna update with the kind of provisions of this project. And we'd like to also do the conditional designation, because that also sets up a separate escrow for this project that we can charge our professional cost towards. We've been doing that on the planning front, but in order to get into the negotiations on the agreement, I'd like to get that authorized, hopefully, at our next meeting.
Jason?
I have a question. Do we have a sense of their timeline, like, when they might actually be looking to start construction?
I don't know, but I will find out. I, I might, I'll tell you, for 1102, he's, he wants, he's, he's in a rush. I don't know this group's timeline. We went a little dormant for a bit. And I do know that they have some tenants, and there may be some, you know, in the commercial property. So I'll find out. That's a good question.
Well, I'd like to see it happen sooner rather than later. I think, I spoke about the second development, we reviewed it there, but I'm showing me in favor of this. We need more housing, we need more affordable housing. We're trying to make this section of town more of a neighborhood and less of a highway, so.
And, and I have, and to your point, I've reinforced the road diet and all that with, so that, you know, that, you know, that's gonna make bike, ped, so this is gonna make this location so.
The whole land that we looked at with our own.
I'd much rather live on a two-lane road with a turning, little turn than a four-lane highway. I think it's gonna be much more livable here. And, and this, for that reason, we're gonna hold them to a really nice streetscape in this area.
Councilman?
Are they coming up to the curb? I couldn't get a.
There's no streetscape, no. There's still the DOT right-of-way, which they will have to put new sidewalks and street trees and all that stuff.
Okay, yeah.
But that's, we're not at that level of detail, but that will be something that gets reviewed. And I, I'm sure they have DOT stuff there. But they're taking away a driveway, so I would assume that.
A lot. Any other questions? All right.
Just to let everybody know, the economic development has, we've gone through this, not in the level of detail that we're, that Terry's going in, but she did bring it to us before, to see much of the stuff.
And you said, okay.
Yeah.
That's amazing.
And they said, over our dead body.
Yeah. Well, they said, let's give the rest of them things that they won't say.
We've mainly said it's faster.
Yeah, that's, that's been pretty much the message lately, and it's been received. So you'll see, one of the reasons for tonight's agenda and.
That's why so.
I'm like, I'm trying to push on all cylinders, try to get some of these things moving.
And I wanted, and I wanted all of you was to be up to speed about where we are with all the redevelopment project. That's why tonight is just about all redevelopment. All right, 1102. Oh, you have a question?
I had a really minor question.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry, Mayor, thank you. About 15% affordable is, is 2.2 units? Do we know what direction they're gonna go?
I believe we rounded up, but I'll, I'll find out for you. We tried around.
Yeah.
2.2. Otherwise, because the reason I think that's what we're doing is otherwise we have.
One minute.
And we didn't talk about that. So I have a suspicion, we just said you.
Yeah. Studio, the studio.
If you rent the two-bedroom.
I should have, I should have looked at that, I apologize. I'm just curious if it's on here.
It's two-bedroom, it's two-bedroom.
Just trying to see if maybe one of their exhibits had the affordables articulated in terms of the numbers, but unfortunately not, sorry about that.
No, that's fine, I don't, I'm sorry.
No, but I, I should have, that's a question I would ask. It pisses me off, I forget questions I would ask. Okay, so with a little bit of that background in mind, remember, it's the same redevelopment plan, the same zoning provisions, bulk standards, you name it, apply. And I just put this in as kind of an interlude slide. This is now, we're talking about 1102 Raritan, which is this one over here between Maryland and South 10th. And just preface, as I mentioned before, this project is, we, we, months old, okay? In terms of their most recent concept plan. So we have not spent nearly as much time with them, but they've done a good job, well enough that I'm comfortable in an open session, kind of showing where they're at. Just to kind of give you the overview, another three-story building, that's the limit of our zoning, by the way. They're proposing a residential building. Think, I've kind of likened it, it won't look like the framework, it's a totally different layout, but it's all residential building, which is allowed under our plan. Again, circumstances changed, and they wanted to consider converting a unit down the line to some other use. They could do that, it couldn't be one of our affordable units, but it could be, we could entertain that. I believe the zoning gives them that ability, and they could apply and, and follow, you know, typical land use procedures to do that.
So this is the former.
It was the Hydro Commerce. And our auditor was located.
Yes, yes.
And later our CFO. And so, yeah, I'm very familiar with it, just having gone there a number of times. But it's basically what was a house that I converted into. And it has, you know, it's just, it is what it is. It's just an old house that got made into that use, and now they're looking to take advantage of our redevelopment plan. And they have, I'm sorry, these are all different designers. And Matt, this one, Raritan's at the bottom, and the parking's in the backyard. And again, we have, again, all residential on the ground level, so you'll have some units facing the parking area. Both projects, I should have pointed out, envision utilizing some tandem parking to meet the needs. For example, if there's a two-car household, they would have, you know, spot A and B stacked. Tandem means like one over the other. In this upper portion here, that's a tandem spot, okay? So these two, so it requires a little more orderliness and planning for the, it's not as desirable from a tenant standpoint, but they feel it's manageable. And they could potentially add spots if they needed to, if there was demand down the line, but they don't anticipate it. But what I will say, which is a little different with this project, is they're, they're offering, there's 26 units, because again, we don't have that commercial space, more housing, 15% affordable, and I didn't bring the numbers, Matt, you can do it for me. And then 33 spaces, some of which are tandem with the ability to expand. That's actually a 1.3 versus a 1.5 ratio. But the plan, we also were flexible on the parking. They can request a exception from the planning board. Chris and I are comfortable with 1.3, especially knowing they have a plan to make it 1.5 if they want through the tandem spots, similar to how the other one did. But we're trying not to overpark. I'll be curious what the planning board makes of that when they get there. And I'm very comfortable kind of living with that, just knowing that we have a way forward. I'm comfortable with the 1.3, as was Chris. We were suggesting they keep them, the tandem units, the way their position is intentional, because in the, on the right-hand side where it's green, that's where the house, it's, it's a distance from that. It's not close to the property line, but we figured, keep the cars as far away from the house part of the property next door, so that we are, you know, just headlights, things like that aren't, aren't disruptive. So that's why they, they were listening to us, and they put them more to the middle to avoid the back, the houses on Maryland and 11th, the side yards of those houses. But they have, they have landscaping and screening and all that to buffer. And we're, we're looking at at least 100 feet distance. You know, it's not, they're not right on top of them, from that, from their building to the neighbors. Let's see. This is a little different, because they have the whole block. So they have in and out off of 8, 11th, and Maryland. It's just because they're not, they're not blocked, so they, again, we're not opening any cuts on Raritan, but we're not closing any either. Let's see, the other, this is just the lower level, mixes of, and on this one, I wouldn't count on the bedroom distributions yet, because I don't think they fully fleshed it out in terms of their numbers. But I can assure you, they'll have 15% affordable, and it will be, you know, across the unit spectrum like we require the other project. Second floor, again, they're very similar, because again, we're not dealing with different use. And then here's the second and third are very similar. Here's the initial concept plan. We think it needs some work, and we've already expressed, like, we don't, we think this is just too blah, and we're giving them the guidance to kind of break the building into more like vertical chunks. But, you know, they're not off the charts, you know? And we like that they have some corner focus and things like that. Streetscape, that stuff, there's no street tree shown yet, but there will be in the final analysis to the requirement of the plan. There was, I think, there was talk of potentially, I don't know if that's the units, one of the projects was thinking about a rooftop component. And I don't, it might have been this one. So there may be coming out of this some kind of rooftop amenity on this building. But I don't, it's not, they're not at that level of design. They wanted to make sure we were generally comfortable with the parking ratios and the kind of number of bedrooms, and then they were gonna start to flesh this project out a little bit further. So, but since there's so much, this is two projects that are kind of coming to a head in the same part of town, and just, we'll talk about it and, and learn from each other on that. So any questions on the particulars of this one?
So there will be an entrance on.
The two sides.
South 10th, then exit.
In and out, in and out on both beds.
And on Maryland.
Yeah, so let me go back to that one.
You have plenty of.
See, plenty.
Entry, exit on, on both.
I think they're gonna, I mean, we're, we're ahead of ourselves, but that 11th is gonna be tricky, obviously, with school.
Yes.
I was gonna make that same point, if there'd be like some additional.
Well, that's why it's good that they have access on Maryland, too. They have in and out on Maryland in addition.
Right, a lot of families will walk, and I was one of them up until last year, the last full year. But, um, yeah, I would just worry about the ingress and egress on South 11th, because that is where everyone walks, so that's where the, the.
Pedestrian. So we'll wanna make sure that's.
Center terminal is gonna be.
But, yeah, that's a good point. I'll make sure, if there's anything we can do to make this crossing easier, maybe, I, I just, I haven't thought about, I mean, it has.
And we're open to more discussions with DOT.
Well, this is not DOT territory here, because this is.
No, I'm talking about down the street where the lights and everything else.
Oh, correct, correct. And 11th is the light, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, but at least that the benefit of the crossing here. And hopefully, you know, it may just work out perfectly that the road diet and these projects, the road diet on those, the road will be there, but we'll have the second phase of the road diet, which is the hardscape, the sidewalks and the driveway entrances. So these projects could kind of come together. Maybe this one, it would be actually better if they could get there first, because then they could get the benefit of it. So that's a good, we'll make sure they're aware of that, you know, the school kid factor, especially in the morning, the afternoons, and the, in the driveway crossing.
These, these folks were further along or?
Less further.
Oh, less further.
Because they're less.
But they need more progress.
They are, they are on a faster track, it seems to me. So they're just, you know, in terms of, you know, we gave them comments, got this back. And that, that's what you're looking at here. So I, I'm feeling like these two, especially because we don't have a meeting until October 21st, might convert, and we might be doing two, if you're comfortable, conditional developer designations and escrow agreements at the same time for both projects.
You're confident. I'm confident.
Yeah. I mean, I, I wanna see some slightly better renderings before I'm totally comfortable.
Right, right.
Conceptually, I'm very comfortable, it's, it's more than.
And I told him, I said, I don't understand that, I understand pictures.
And we won't get as flashy of a picture set with this group, because they're, you know, again, one thing, I, I will mention, I was thinking about, you know, now that we're getting closer, we'll, we'll do some sort of communication with some of the immediate neighbors, so that they know what's going on and they're in the loop. I don't, we haven't, I'm quite fleshed out what that's gonna look like. I don't think we have to do, you know, community open house for the size of projects these are. But, you know, this is a major change, and they're backing up right on the residential area. So I wanna make sure they were very knowledgeable.
Some.
When we adopted the plan.
Over at Urban School, we can open up and.
So that's just something.
Have that discussion there.
I'm intending to. Um, I'm intending to kind of go through with you, Mayor, and.
They're not asking for any financial agreement.
They can't, we can't, they're not in a redevelopment area.
Do we know?
Oh, they asked. And I said, no, you're not in a redevelopment area, so make it work, people.
Man.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I, I'm just guessing, before we name a conditional developer, we'll get to know about. I mean, we, like, who they are, I'd like, you know, who they are.
Other projects they've done.
Sure, I have that stuff, absolutely. But they pretty much have.
They might not have much of a.
Well, I, I mean, I'm, I'm just warning you, like, their projects are pretty basic, I know they're big for us, but they're, you know, I think, but. Yeah, we can, I, I have that, it's, I, it's just, didn't even occur to me.
Jason?
Yeah, uh, one last question for me, which pertains to both.
I'm sorry, do you need the graphic backup?
No, I don't need the graphic, I'm not even sure why I'm looking. So we talked about maybe there being some flexibility in terms of the commercial spaces, maybe having the flexibility to switch to a residential, and maybe vice versa. Depending on like demand, and there was talk of then maybe need to go back to the planning board for some sort of special approval. But if we're generally comfortable with that flexibility, can we write it into the plan? So that they can have that option to do it without having to come back to, uh, a body, I mean, like, if we're already.
I have to look into that, that's a level of, of detail, I, the plan's adopted, so I'm not looking to amend their plan.
Right.
Um, I think there are just certain land use things that I know frustrate you, based on just knowing you this limited time we've worked together. You know, you're like, really, we have to go through this many steps to just do that? I think with land use, when you're changing uses, there's a certain amount of protocol, it goes before the board, it would be a very easy application, and these guys are in small time. They can, they can handle it, I think they, they know their markets, I'm gonna trust that they think that these uses can work. I'm more nervous, I'm not nervous about the residential, I am curious about those small offices. But they could also combine a couple of those offices, make one office, you know, they, they have flexibility with those, those footprints. But if they were gonna make those apartments, that's a much bigger, like, they're gonna need construction permits, because they gotta put water, you know, put toilets, you know, all that stuff. So anyway, I, I just, I'm not that concerned about that, I, I think they're gonna have to build whatever they put before the planning board. Or come back to the planning board to amend the plan, you know, that's what they're.
Well, I'm not so concerned about it now either, after hearing you out.
Words of assurance.
Solid response.
If the commercial is the, is the RSIS or our own redevelopment standard is different for the commercial? If I have an office, I have one person who walk there, I have a secretary.
I think, it, it, that's a challenge that they would have to figure out, you're absolutely right, I don't know the numbers that have been calculated. I think it would be easier in some ways for the. It, it might not be so hard, because we have been kind of flexible with the parking ratio for the residential, and there is some flexibility in the plan. You know, while we think one plan buys right, you want to make a case for less, do it, you know, and we're open to that. Um, and so we have a one point three with the residential project, and a one point five with the commercial mixed use project. Um, so, you know, they would have to grapple with the parking requirements or seek, uh, a variance.
Because, uh, uh, I'm concerned, I'm concerned that, um, especially in that neighborhood, which is immediate residential and, and school. That we, we blow up the, the parking tent, the parking to get some density there. Um, and we create more problems on the street.
Right.
Especially in that area, because we have, we, we have parking problems everywhere.
Right.
Um, and, and, and I'll tell you quite frankly, especially in these smaller projects, uh, uh, and in that area. I, 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 I had an emotional breakup with, uh, commercial on the bottom, residential on the top. I, I, I'm more inclined to see a lot more residential to provide the housing and expand the, uh, the percentages. Uh, thereby to get more affordable housing, because you look at the numbers for Highland Park's affordability, they're really not. I'm, that's just, I, I've become less and less an amateur of the commercial, the old formula of commercial.
Okay.
But, I, 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 I'm, I'm good working with the developer, uh, to, to work on.
Right now, it's in the plan, so we'd be kind of baiting, switching them to saying, hey, make it residential.
I don't want to do that, I want to make sure that they cover the issue, because I deal with it all the time, where somebody says, well, I want to put commercial on the bottom. You know, the boss works, or the secretary walks, the boss parks there, and then two clients do. So you've got three vehicles, in, in a, we're in a formula of one point five, it's not gonna work.
Well.
But I just want to see that that gets covered.
Okay, I mean, you do want to make, I mean, they, they think that they need the, they, they currently meet the standard in our workings. That's what it is, is it sufficient? Time will tell, so I don't know that we have the ability impose more, we can try to negotiate it, but they'll just throw more tandems.
I understand, we have to, we have to live with what we have, I'm just concerned that, that, that meets. So if instead of three commercials, which is a lot, even for a small office, go, you know, can they plan it down? I just want to see if that happens.
Yeah, but I think you do get more shared with the office too, so like, versus all residential, you know. You know, the, the pa, the usage patterns are pretty similar, and now with everybody working at home half the time, it's hard to figure out what that is anymore.
It's a lot of low mileage cars and cars.
That's true.
I, I would just, to, to your point, and I think it's a, a good one worth raising, but I, I do think that the way we designed the flexibility for the offices. Apartments and office apartment, you know, there's a lot of different ways that they can configure it. And, um, and that makes me a little bit more comfortable, and if, for example, they have, it's all offices, and if, example, private. Private, you know, the parking seems to be a disaster, or something like that, then the market will take care of that, it might be one to a, to a residential or something. So, I understand your concern, I think you should certainly look into it, and like, do you like the flexibility that we put in the plan in different ways?
I, I do too, because I think, I think, uh, you know, we'll see what they come up with, it is there, but that's a concern that I have.
And I definitely think we can, I mean, there'll be, if they have a parking problem, it's a parking problem for them too. And not just because it's gonna make other places a little less marketable, but also, before we look at rare. Chris and I have always looked at this little plan as kind of like a test zoning case for what might work on, on Raritan. So it'll, it's, I'm really excited that we have these projects coming in, I'm not saying, oh, they're a total, I think we designed something that can work, and it'll be good. But we'll learn from it, and if we find that's overparked or underparked, we can certainly, the next plan or the next zoning amendment. We can reflect that, um, uh, but, you, you know, if some of this is. And that, and that could change, like, the demand, people might look at that stretch of, of our town much differently in terms of livability and.
I think that's what's gonna happen, I think it, it has a good potential to be more livable, I'm just, I'm just concerned that that becomes livable. And we get a parking problem in the neighborhood.
Sure.
That's not gonna be acceptable.
And, and I actually, in looking at these projects, um, what we did, uh, we, an NPP related project. Um, looking at, uh, various things that are parking, our same parking in Spelton worked with us downtown, did a study of Woodbridge Ave. But since he was in the neighborhood, I actually did have him carve out this area, and so I revisited, there were no major findings. It's tight at certain times, you know, just, you know, like, we all have lived, and, and certainly schools a factor. Um, but he did have some recommendations that I'm dusting off, because there may be some other things we can do, just administratively or with some. Uh, ordinance.
Yes.
You know, amendments to, to parking zones and things like that, that might open up more on street, kind of like what we did around the Frederick. We opened up two sided parking on Lincoln, you know, to try to take some of the cushion. Give a little cushion to the project that's in that new neighborhood, so I'm also, to your point, I, I think these projects work without that, but I think it's worth. Looking at those recommendations, and it might help to have do both things hand in hand.
Okay, thanks.
No, I was just gonna agree, I was just, I was just gonna do this though, I, I, yeah, I, any parking is such a, is so difficult over there, you know. A, a, a central one around there, and snowstorms still give me nightmares, it's not true, I think they all do. Um, so, yeah, I, I, I just want to discuss that, I'm sorry.
Uh, Terry, so with them kind of like playing around, uh, with the ratios between commercial and residential.
I don't think that's being played around with, the commercial is what they want to do, I was talking about the bedroom, like, is it gonna be? Free one bedrooms, three, two bedrooms, three, three bedrooms, well, it may be end up being four two bedrooms, or in three, three, you know, like, that's what's still in.
So if down the line they do want to change, would that change their number of affordables?
I don't think they could drop an affordable, even if they converted something to commercial, I, I, and I think that's something. We might want to put in our redevelopment agreement that you, you must make, you know, if for some reason down the line you change your composition. You, doesn't mean your ratio drops.
Yeah, yeah.
So you're, that means that you're losing a market, basically, if you're gonna convert to commercial. So I suspect that won't happen.
You can restrict the apartment, you know what I'm saying, so if they have three apartments that are restricted, you could say to them, by the way, you can't convert that apartment to a commercial space. It's a, that's a deed restricted, that's an affordable housing.
You got this approval in part because there were gonna be three.
Uh, and any agreement would have a time period as to how long they have to keep it, we, we might want to communicate that too.
Any problem with that. None of them expressed interest. That's been something we as the staff.
So, so any affordable, you know.
The deed restriction is in place.
Even, even if it changes ownership?
So like, let's say you bought one of those units that was for sale, you could only sell it under the terms.
But we would monitor that from, from the admin, the departments, they're not a really provider, they're, they're not gonna be.
They would use the affordable housing agent and administrative agent to run their project, we would, we, like, we do our annual reporting, we would say. Checking in with their agent, they have to have an agent, we've been advising them, try to use the one we're using, because we think it's easier to keep track. Um, so, yes, we, we tally up every year, the state makes sure we stay on our game with that.
Yeah.
But as long as it's recorded, then you don't have to worry about someone slipping in, sort of buying it, and then converting it without anybody, you know what I'm saying? Like, those, those restrictions are, are everywhere, and anyone looking to purchase the property would know that those restrictions.
Mortgage would say.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay. Alright, that's it, okay, now we move to public comments, there's no one attending, um, in public.
I see someone called Zoom user, uh, if you want to speak, please raise your hand. Uh, no, but that's the only attending.
Okay, seeing done, they have a motion to close public participation.
Councilmember Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Council President Ken John?
Yes.
Councilmember Piston?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Um, now it's time, no formal action, now we're gonna move to executive session, may I have a motion? Um, executive session items will be redevelopment negotiation track A. Redevelopment negotiation three oh eight Raritan, negotiation cross access, uh, easement. Three, three, two, Raritan Avenue.
So, second.
Welcome, sorry. Councilmember George?
Yes.
Councilmember Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Council President Ken John?
Yes.
Councilmember Piston?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
We're an exec. Alright, well.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, 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 maybe that was earlier, he was sitting in the car, um, Chris?
Oh, he was here for something.
Yeah, I thought, I was waiting for, I was like, oh, maybe he's coming.
Do we adjourn?
Yes, motion to adjourn. May I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, meet in adjourn.
Okay, time to go.